We're gonna call this meeting to order. City Commission Meeting for December tenth, two thousand and fifteen. We want to welcome each and every one of you here to our December meeting. We're gonna ask that Reverend Ben Tippett, Senior Pastor at Victory Christian Fellowship, please come forward and lead us in the invocation. Yeah, we're gonna, since Reverend Tippett's not here, we're gonna ask Commissioner Campbell, could you lead us in invocation and also in pledge? We ask everyone to stand at this time.
Everyone, please bow your head. Dear heaven, Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this assembly, God. We ask as we go forth to conduct the business of the city, God, that you give us the wisdom, the knowledge, and the understanding. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll top list.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Presenting.
Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Norwood.
Here.
All members present and counting for. You have a form.
Thank you. When I move on to approval of minutes, everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes from our November twelfth meeting.
Most people approve.
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Campbell, the second Vice Mayor Brown. Any readiness? Questions to call? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carried unanimously. When I move on to item number one on the agenda, which is our public recognition. I'm gonna ask Vice Mayor Brown, if she would join me for public recognition for this week when we get to our student.
So the first thing we have on the agenda is, we have a proclamation for the late Mayor E.L. Punk Walker. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas former Palaka Mayor, trusted pharmacist, and decorated WWII Air Force veteran Eugene L. Walker passed from life on December second, two thousand and fifteen, at the age of ninety-one. Punk, as he was affectionately known, was of native Palaka and born June twentieth, nineteen twenty-four. He attended area schools, graduated from Palaka High School in nineteen forty-two, joined the Air Force in February of nineteen forty-three after one term of college. And during WWII, flew thirty-five missions over Germany in B-seventeens as a bombardier navigator. Upon returning to the United States, Punk Walker married his high school sweetheart, Pat Tanner, in nineteen forty-six, and returned to the University of Florida, graduated in nineteen forty-nine with a Bachelor of Pharmacy degree. And whereas Punk Walker returned to Palaka, began his career as a pharmacist at Matt Moore's Drugstore, went on to purchase both Ackerman Stewart Drugstore, the second oldest drugstore in Florida, and City Drugstore. He co-founded Palm Pharmacy in nineteen sixty-three, and recently practiced at Eckert's Drugs, where he was committed for fifty years of service as a licensed pharmacist in January two thousand, was featured by Eckert as a Pharmacy Innovator of the Month, and whereas Punk Walker served as Mayor of Palaka from January nineteen sixty-six through December nineteen sixty-nine, and again from July eighth, nineteen seventy-one through December of nineteen eighty-seven, for a total of almost twenty years. During that time, he led the drive to complete the purchase of the land that is now J.C. Godwin Riverfront Park. Strode to maintain racial harmony in Palaka during a time of turmoil, worked tirelessly to improve housing for the poor, and was instrumental in convincing FDOT to build the current Veterans Memorial Bridge. He helped convince the Board of County Commissions to turn countywide emergency rescue services over to the city of Palaka, whose fire department provided those services until nineteen ninety-two. He helped to reorganize the police department, devising a salary advancement plan, which was studied and used as a model by many other major cities and metropolitan cities all over the United States. And whereas Mayor Punk Walker won the respect and admiration of the employees and citizens alike of the city of Palaka through his wise counsel, good governing, and negotiation skills. Afterwards, he continued to serve his community, often provided sound political advice. In two thousand and eighty, he published a memoir entitled Whistling Dixie: The Life and Times of a Small Town Mayor Who Worked to Make a Big Time Difference, which includes tales of his interactions with Babe Ruth, Lawton Charles, Walt Disney, Martin Luther King, Bobby Kennedy, Lyndon Johnson, and Richard Nixon. Now therefore, I Tarrell Hill, Mayor of the city of Palaka, together with the members of the Palaka City Commission, do hereby proclaim, December third through tenth of two thousand and fifteen, as a period of mourning, to honor the passage of the Honorable Eugene L. Punk Walker, Mayor Emeritus, City of Palaka, and hereby order all flags posted by all city departments to be flown at half-staff throughout the week, and ask that all citizens, government offices, and other entities throughout the city of Palaka equally honor this declaration of mourning, and witness whereof I hereunto set and cause my hand to be affixed to seal of Palaka on this tenth day of December the year of our Lord, two thousand and fifteen. Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, James Norwood Junior, Tarrell Hill Mayor. And we wanna take this time to have, we wanna just take a moment of silence out in remembrance of Mayor Eugene L. Punk Walker. Thank you. We wanna ask Vice Mayor Brown, who's probably the only person on this commission with thirty, almost thirty-two years of experience, to just give a few words about Mayor Walker as we close this portion of our recognition.
Well, this is a surprise to me, but you know I can always talk. Mayor Walker, I came to this meeting because I was concerned about something I saw going on in the black community, the giving away of the Northside Center. I opened my mouth at that time, something else came up, and I opened my mouth again. And he told me that I was beginning to sound like my grandmother, who I'm named for, Mary Lawson. She had a hospital here for a number of years, and I got interested in coming. And he told me to be careful what I said, because I might be sitting up there with him one day. At that time, I never thought I would. But he was a very interesting man. He was well-learned in government. He really loved this town, and he worked hard for us to be the best town we could be. We also acquired the train station while he was there through efforts and got Price Martin put there. He was a good friend of Chapel, Congressman Chapel. First time I ever met a congressman was with him. He brought him here to this town, and before then, I don't think we had ever had those kind of people coming here to visit us. He left, he leaves a legacy behind him that it leads us to follow. I didn't always get along with him all the time, because we did have different ways of thinking with different ages and different ethnic backgrounds, but when it came to it, you could usually get in the stop and listen a little while, and if it would work to make it better for Palaka, he was there and would work with you to get it done.
So let's give up one final round of applause for Mayor Eugene Punk Walker. We now have a special recognition for Herman Mites. Is he, is Herman here tonight? Herman is here, I hear him. Is Mr. Griffith here? Herman, can you come up forward with me?
Oh, sure, sir. Hi, sir. See you on me, hi, sir.
Gotcha. Let me tell you, how you doing?
Good, sir, yourself?
Herman is a, Herman is one of our favorite citizens, and we don't take that lightly, but just recently, is Mr. Griffith around? Herman, uh...
Who, Jonathan?
Herman goes over and beyond the call of duty. You'll normally find him somewhere near downtown on his bicycle, and he's one of these guys that he'll help in and pitch in wherever he can. And most recently, you, enough you guys have gone through downtown and you've seen the likes that were put up, this young man takes his own time. He volunteers to help the city employees, to help Jonathan, some of the other guys that were out working on this stuff, Jermaine, Tim Brooks and those guys, and he helped to put this stuff up. He's a hands-on guy. He's a stand-up citizen. And Herman, tonight, we wanna go ahead and give you a Distinguished Community Service Award that reads, "This certificate of appreciation is awarded by the City of Palaka City Commission to Herman Mites and grateful recognition for your work and dedication. Christmas two thousand and sixteen Downtown Palaka Lighting of Trees, awarded this tenth day of December eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen." And we wanna give this to you.
Thanks, sir.
We now have another special group of people, and we're gonna call them up right now. There's been a lot of talk about the Veterans Memorial Fountain, and it's one of the, it's one of our prizes when you talk about the riverfront, and most of us can remember when that fountain was lit up and how it kinda was the focal piece of, of riverfront, of the Riverfront Park. And it went dormant for a while, and we didn't have that, we didn't have that focal point. But thanks to these citizens who took it, who didn't take it robbery, to organize, to work together cohesively, we now have our Veterans Memorial Fountain back up. It's lit up, and it again is a prize for this community. And I wanna call these individuals up, one by one, and the certificate reads as follows. It's a Distinguished Community Service Award. This certificate of appreciation is awarded by the City of Palaka City Commission, as the name follows, and grateful recognition of your contribution, work, and dedication to the renovation of Veterans Memorial Fountains, Palaka Riverfront Park. And the first one is for Pentair Aquatics. We have you come forward. We want everyone to come forward. We'll take a photo at the end. We have a representative from Pentair Aquatics here. I want you guys to give him a round of applause as he comes forward. I'm gonna take a picture of everybody. Intermatic, is there a representative from Intermatic? Zodiac Pool Systems? I bet you're not this rep. Home Depot of Palaka. Sunrise Rotary Club.
Thank you, sir.
We're doing it again. Alex Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Tim Brooks. This is the city's Tim Brooks, not the county.
Way to go.
Thank you.
Jermaine Douglas. Jermaine's not here. Jason Brown. Doug Victoria and Jeff Van Horn. Gary Gresson, Preston Electric.
I'll accept for him, Mayor.
And again, while we have this group standing up here, I want you guys to know that this project, and I'll have Mr. Van Horn and Mr. Sharp come over here if you don't mind and kinda just say a few words, but this project really was one that took a coordination of efforts, and I won't belabor the point, but I can just tell you guys, we appreciate everything that you've done, the amount of effort, the amount of work that you put into this, and it's just something that the city can never repay you for, and we love you for what you've done, and we want you guys to come up and maybe, if anyone wants to give a few words...
I'll go first, and we'll have to follow. I just wanna say that I was only ancillary on this, but I just wanna thank specifically the Van Horns. They obtained all the equipment that we needed. He put countless hours into the project down there, and the city, Tim, Tim again, put countless hours down there. I mean, I just showed up and walked around and looked important, but without these guys, Home Depot giving us the equipment, Jason devoted his time and effort to making sure we can keep all that nice new equipment secure, and it just all came together. And that's, that's what community is about, and this is how we get things done in Palaka. And I just wanna leave you with that. And I wish everybody would give the Van Horns and everybody else a round of applause.
That's kinda hard to follow up behind, but...
That's why I went first.
That's right. We, we saw the condition that these fountains were in, and we knew that something had to be done, so with Alex's help, we just put everything together and started reaching out and made it happen, so we as a community could enjoy it again, and I hope you guys enjoy it for years to come.
Thank you.
Can we get a picture before you guys leave? Get a picture of you. Is there a way we can get one for the newspaper?
Gotta show them the certificate. Come on. Remember, ice cream, not poor diet. Sure. Everybody, ice cream on Alex. Show them the certificate.
Stand up, Jason.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Interim Chief Griffith, could you please join me after the podium? Do we have a Jane script in the bag? Our next recognition goes to two special young ladies to our Palaka Pride Group and to this commission. I think Palaka Pride has been an initiative that we've really pushed for throughout the last year, something to help beautify our community. I hope that you guys are really seeing the difference in the level of care that we have in the community. We've seen a difference in amount of participation. Over the last seven months, we've collected over ten thousand pounds of trash, and we've cleaned up various communities throughout the city, and it would not be possible without these next two award winners, and we wanna recognize them as the Employees of the Quarter. Most recently, we did our Fall Festival, and it was a very labor-intensive and time-intensive project. It was a coordination of about thirty community groups. It was a partnership with Saint John's River State, and several meetings throughout the community. And I can tell you, these ladies worked tirelessly, and we're very proud of them and the efforts they've had. We've cleaned up community, we've cleaned up houses, we've torn down derelict houses in the last, about five houses in the last, ten houses in the last few months. But we're starting to see a difference in the way things are, and they go over beyond the call of duty. And this award reads Employee of the Quarter, City of Palaka, City Commission, we hereby express our sincere appreciation toward the certificate to Police Officer Malin Reeves, Community Service Palaka Pride, and grateful recognition for your exemplary performance, productivity commitment, and dedicated service, and beyond the call of duties to the citizens of Palaka, awarded this tenth day of December two thousand and fifteen. Thanks, Reeves. Same award goes to Laura Jones, Code Force Officer.
James Griffith, Palaka Police Department. It's a, it's a pleasure being a supervisor for both these ladies. They, they really do go above and beyond, and they give, they give their own time. They've worked weekends and nights to try and organize events and these cleanups, and we're just real proud of them, and you know, we're thankful that they're working for us. Thank you.
You guys gonna say anything?
Anyone get the kids up?
Laura, I know Laura won't say so.
I'll just have our kids come up, Casey, Carrie, Kelsey, and Lindsay, because without their support, we wouldn't be able to do all this.
Yes.
They get dragged to a lot of these things as well. They help us out a lot.
Yeah.
And they always do it smiling. Come on up, Casey.
Come on.
Mr. Reynolds. Our next recognition is for FGFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the City of Palaka. This is for Matt Reynolds, Finance Director. And it, and the release reads as follows. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Finance, Financial Reporting has been awarded to the City of Palaka by Governance Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, our CAFR. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. An award for financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the individuals, department or agency designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing award-winning CAFRs. This has been presented to the Finance Department of the City of Palaka. The CAFR has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFR. The GFBOA is a nonprofit professional organization serving approximately seventeen thousand five hundred government finance professionals with offices in Chicago, Illinois, and Washington, DC. And again, Mr. Reynolds, we wanna present the certificate. I'll have Mr., I have City Manager Terry Suggs read that certificate.
Yes, sir. Mr. Reynolds, on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Palaka and the citizens of the City of Palaka, we'd like to present you with this Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. So congratulations, and so glad to have you as a member of this team.
Well, I just wanna say that this award is not just for me, but it's also for the entire Finance Department as well as the City of Palaka, because there's a lot of teamwork that goes into achieving this award, and I especially wanna thank our auditors for their assistance in, in helping us get this award. So round of applause for them as well.
Now, for the moment that we've all been waiting for. Commissioner Norwood. This is our time where we get an opportunity to recognize our young people, the future of this community, and one of the most precious resources that we have. But before we recognize them, we wanna also take this time out to recognize all our parents for their hard work, because if it's not for your labor and love, these young people would not be standing here today. And so we want all our parents to stand up at this time, along with family and friends. We wanna recognize you and thank you for being so supportive of the young folks that are here. At this time, we're gonna call out the names of the award winners for our outstanding student awards. We're gonna ask that that student come up, along with the representative from the school, will remain up front until everyone has been called out. We're gonna, we'll take a brief break, and we'll take photos. And we'll, so we'll take a recess at that point, we'll take some photos, so any family members that wanna take pictures, we'll line up individually after we take a group picture for the newspaper, and you'll have a time to get some photos of your kids. So at this time, we're gonna go ahead and start out, and we're, our first recipient from Browning Pierce Elementary School, Caitlin Mayberry. From Browning Pierce Elementary, Ellie Harrington. From CLOverturf Sixth Grade Center, Josie Bergen. From the Children's Reading Center Charter School, Gage White. From EH Miller, Justin Winkle. From James A. Long, Joseph Blunt. Jenkins Middle School, Amani Sap. From EH Miller School, Justin Winkle. Let's give another round of applause for Justin. Kelly Smith Elementary, Rachel Stillward. From Mosley Elementary, Austin Kiss. Also from Mosley, Angelo Martinez. Angelo looks a lot like Mr. Lee. From Palaka High School, Kennedy Range. We also wanna recognize former County Commissioner Bonnie Allender. Who's in the audience, can you stand for us at this time? We're gonna take a wild guess that our Penn Out Baptist Academy Award winner, Brianna Allender, has a lot to do with it. From the Putnik Academy of Arts and Sciences, Elizabeth Cribs. And last but not least, from Putnik Marriage High School, Danae Wells. We wanna take this time out, guys, to just tell you all that we are very proud of what you've done. Continue the good work. I used to start every day out in the third grade with a very simple poem that says, "I am somebody. If my mind can conceive it and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it, because I am somebody." We learned that at Mosley Elementary School, and I wanna tell you today that each and every one of you standing before us today, that you are somebody, that you're gonna be the best that you can be, and never let anybody else stop you from doing that. So again, we're proud of you, and we thank you for your achievements. At this time, we wanna give them one round of applause again, recognizing your efforts. This is the future of Palaka, and we're gonna take a brief recess so that we can take pictures and do everything, so I'm gonna ask that all the school representatives at this time, we wanna thank you again for your attendance and for your great work with these young people, and this could not be possible without you. And we also wanna take time out for everyone to line up in a single file line, and we're gonna take pictures at the time. So we'll stay in recess for about five minutes. We're now moving to item number two on the agenda, which is our public comment section. Comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. If you're, if you're here to speak during public comment, please fill out a comment card and... card and bring it up with you and so we can go ahead and recognize you. First comment card we have is William Bill Stevens, 216 Crystal Cove Drive. As you come up, would you just take your name for the record and the microphone?
My name is Bill Stevens, William Stevens. I live at 216 Crystal Cove Drive. I've just got a couple of questions and a couple of comments. The first is, I want to state that I am not against or disagree with the fire assessment. My question is, what kind of source of legal notification was given to all City property owners? No answer?
We get legal notice five times for five different meetings.
In what source?
Same way we do for everybody in the meeting.
Okay. Everybody doesn't come at the City Commission meeting, I know. Everybody doesn't take a paper. And everybody sure doesn't get on the website. So that's the answer. Okay. I also know that the fee was based on appraisal of the property. So how can this be fair to some people and not to others? So one piece of property is paying, say, $200. The other piece of property is assessed and paying $1,000. And sometime, each one of these pieces of property is going to have a fire. Now, how many firemen are going to show up? Well, say the piece of property is $200. How many firemen are going to show up if they purchase a $1,000? Does that seem fair? I don't think so. Another one is, the churches were given a transition fee of 50% off in their assessment. Now, is this fair to the rest of the city citizens? Again, I don't think so. But that's just my comment. So the point of it is, is those who can't afford it are going to pay more. So I don't see what is any justification of that. Of course, I know it's passed. It's going to be, it's going to be the next year. Anyway, the point is, thank you for your time and it satisfied me.
We thank you for coming. Can we thank you for your comments? Is anyone else here for public comment? Seen no one else here for public comment? Is there someone filling out a card? Are you coming up? You filling out a card for public comment?
Yeah.
Go ahead, come up.
Yeah, my comment.
You know your card?
I got two comments. One, it's-
You can name an address for the-
My name is Kenneth Andrews, Senior. I live at 401 South 14th Street, Palaca, Florida. I've been a resident here all my life. And one of the things is, I want to assess is the fire assessment. How do y'all expect people on fixed income to come up with such money as these? Like a guy said earlier, all of a sudden you come up with these fees and, was it notification? I don't recall any notification. I mean, I probably read a little something in the paper about it. Before it's coming up so soon, I had no idea. And the fixed income, income in my wife's own, we cannot afford this. And it's the same thing like the guy was saying. If we had a fire at our place at 401 South 14th Street, where would the fire department come from? You know, that's another thing. Talking about the assessment fees, from our understanding, the fire department kind of moved the road. And I live less than five blocks from the fire department, you know? And the other thing is, is about the water. It's ridiculous. Just had our house redone, all the plumbing and electrical, everything redone. Hundred and something Delta unit. It went out, okay? So I replaced parts in it. It went out again. And it's all pertaining to the water. My wife was using the sink the other night, and I had to go off and borrow some money and run up the Lowe's before they closed to try to fix the laboratory unit. For the simple reason, you turn on the water and all the corrosion and all the hot stuff all around the counterwater, all over the floor. You had to get that up. And here I got a, that new unit, I got the old one right there. And besides that, we spent over $67 a month for water. It was up here because I refused to allow her to drink that water. Only thing we could do with that water is wash clothes, dishes, and take a bath. And for the laboratory and the bathroom. I mean, what's, what's going to be done about that?
Why don't you call the city manager, why don't you come down here and meet the city manager, let him get through the water department, and then you can, you can address it from there. Have you done that thus far?
No, I haven't.
Okay. You do that, and they can look at what's going on and see if they can help you out.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else here for public comment? Seen no level of close public comment at this time. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which is item number three. Consent agenda, item number eight. Adopt Resolution Number 2015-1182. Authorizing the renewal of the FOE Assistance Program Assistance Contract, EHP Benefits Contract with Vanessa Townsend Associates for one-year term beginning 1/116. B, Adopt Resolution Number 2015-1183. Authorizing the following nominal lease renewal effective 1/1/2016. Palaca Duplicate Bridge Club Lease on Portion of the Cooper Building. Two, Hard Putnam Food Pantry Incorporated Lease on Portion Cooper Building. Three, Key Putnam Beautiful Lease on the Office Space at 205 North Second Street. Four, Palaca Art League Lease on Tillman House. Item C, Adopt Resolution Number 2015-1184. Authorizing execution of FEMA 184006 R Grant Agreement. Modification to amend Phase II project budget to $399,973. $99,993 the city shares. D, Adopt Resolution Number 2015-1185. Authorizing execution of Certificate of Acceptance of the Department of Justice Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, the JACSUP Grant Contract Number 2016, JACC putnam 2H3003, in amount of $13,235 for PPD 2016 Putnam JAC. E, Resolution Number 2015-1186. Authorizing submission of NSJR WMV Fiscal Year 2016 Cost Share Application for the Buckle Park Regional Storm Water Pond Project. F, Adopt Resolution 2015-1187. Authorizing submission of St. Dunbar Water Management District Fiscal Year 2016 Cost Share Application for South Historic District Storm Water Treatment Improvement Project. G, Adopt Resolution 2015-1188. Authorizing the mayor and the city of Palaca executing a testament memorandum of understanding with FDEP for water taxi dock facilities at Dunn's Creek State Park. H, Accept Resignation of Charlie Douglas from the Palaca Planning Board, expect him immediately with regrets. H, Accept Resign- I. Reappoint Tony Skip Harwell and Earl Wallace to the Palaca Planning Board for three-year terms to expire December 31st, 2018, incumbent, so like the applicant. J, Recommend Appointment of Commissioner Rufus Warren to the Putnam County Better Place Plan Oversight Committee for the remainder of two-year term, expiring December 31st, 2016. Adopt 2016K. Adopt 2016 Palaca City Commission Meeting Event Schedule for Calendar Year 2016. Are any items on the consent agenda need to be removed?
Now, I, I have one conflict coming up with the calendar, but I'll get with you on it later in the year. So it might come in a bit.
Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be removed?
I want to remember that, um, city manager asked, I talked to him and we won.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, if it would be okay with the commission, we'd like to pull item G from the consent agenda for tonight and table it for an opportunity to follow up on some more information that we may be able to, which is in our memorandum of understanding. Because it's not a time, students have no right to call students of item. So the city manager's office is requesting that we just pull the item and table it for the season.
Move item three and, uh, what an exception of item G.
There's a motion by Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion? Seen none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number four, the agenda's request of authorizing execution of Palaca Housing Authority's annual forms, determination of exemption and categorical exclusion, 24CRS 58.34A and 58.35B, on behalf of Palaca Housing Authority's site improvement fiscal year 2016 to 2020. CFP AMP 11, 12, and 15 in certifying consistency with the city's comprehensive plan. John Nelson, Deputy Director of Staff's recommendation to table to a time certain, January 14, 2016.
Mr. Mayor, if it would be the pleasure of the commission, the items that were required to go ahead and make the motion on this annual report for the Palaca Housing Authority has now been included. We finished up mediation and that council, the council, how you say that word, Don?
Conciliation.
Thank you, Don. And, uh, the, the language for, uh-
Nelson's there.
Oh, there he is. Okay.
Nelson's getting a couple of force.
Would you like for me to stop my recording on this, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, the, the information was distributed to all the commissioners late yesterday evening for inclusion in the, into the housing plan for tonight. As you can see, Mr. Nelson's from the Palaca Housing Authority is here. He can address it further, but we do not need to have a time certain. Although we can get it concluded tonight if it be the will of the commission.
And just for us, I miss you the record. He gets the language in the agreement. We think we finally have a resolution. There is going to be a agreement as to the language that's included. Mr. Holmes, if you may, just for the record, place that language in the record.
That's why you give me several times.
Yes. Basically, it's one change.
Commissioners, as, as the city manager alluded to, and as the mayor also alluded to, we did engage in what's called a conciliation process in the federal process of federal system. We, we often refer to it as mediation in the state process. Mr. Nelson was the representative and, and we, it was ours, discussed the resolution of the complaint that the housing authority had filed. And if you recall, our hope, and your hope, was that we could have homeownership in the, in the dwellings or structures that were to be built under the Housing Authority Capital Improvement Plan. And we came up with language which, it's my understanding that Mr. Nelson and the Housing Authority is comfortable with and which we think is, is a, is an acceptable compromise. It's attached as in exhibit A. Take a packet that you've got there. And I can read it. The paragraph seven of the plan that was submitted was the item that, or that issue, if you'll recall. I think you actually passed the plan, but you struck paragraph seven from the plan when you passed it. And that was the, the paragraph that had to do with future development. So, uh, this language that now exists, if you recall before, and I, I'm going to try to, a lot too heavily on the memory, but I believe that it was up to six minutes that the Housing Authority indicated they intended to do a search to build. Um, and, uh, what we have now is, is the following language. PHA, Palaca Housing Authority, may develop not more than two single-family homes in the South Historic District that complies with all regulations, covenants, and restrictions applicable to the historic district. So they're not getting any exemptions or waivers from the same rules that apply to anybody else who is billed or in that location. PHA will in good faith use best efforts to place families in these homes who appear likely to qualify to purchase the homes within five years after placement. PHA will give preference points based on creditworthiness and otherwise used procedures that have succeeded in placements and other PHA lease to own programs and properties. If after five years, the families occupying these two homes are unable to purchase or have not initiated purchase of the homes, PHA will relocate the families and use best efforts to, to place families who appear likely to qualify to purchase the homes within five years after placement. The parties through this provision express their mutually agreed intent to be that PHA return these homes to the active tax rolls of the City of Palaca. If the City of Palaca believes PHA has not used best efforts, the city may commence a civil action in a court of competent jurisdiction after exhausting provisions of section K below. The prevailing party would be entitled to an award of reasonable attorneys fees and costs. So we believe the language is acceptable. Hopefully, Mr. Nelson does also. And so we're, we're ready to recommend that as a compromise and as a, basically as a supplement to the plan that, that you have, I guess, before you, as an exhibit. It's the, the front page, is that two-page handout that you have?
If that may be the settlement, is the commission, I would ask for, is there any comments, first of all?
I just have a question around that. In, in here it reads, if the families are not able to secure, I guess, finances to obtain the, the properties after five years, then it would go, it would go to, it could go back to another family, another family?
PHA would use best efforts to then try to find another family that would qualify, that would appear to qualify for ownership. So-
So that renewed another five years, if that family, just say if you locate another family, so that would then put it back in the pool for another five years?
That's correct. I'd like to say that, to date, we have not been unsuccessful in selling properties owned by the Housing Authority within a reasonable time period. Over the years, while a lot of people might not have remembered it, we have transferred thirty-five public housing units, single-family homes, to homeownership and return those units to the tax rolls. So we have a successful program and a good track record.
I'm just looking to accept that that Mr. Nelson for working with the city on this.
I'm saying, let me ask on your motion, just for purpose of your motion, also includes the commission to accept, to approve the plan as well?
Yes.
So there's a motion to approve the plan as well as the exhibit attached, as exhibit A. There's a second by-
Second.
-by Commissioner Board.
All right, my question. Mr. Nelson, I've got a question. Is the language in, a part of the script language that was drafted, is acceptable to the Housing Authority as well?
Yes, it is.
Question. Question for the call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much on behalf of the Housing Authority.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to item number five on the agenda, Public Hearing Resolution. Electing Use of Uniform Method of Collection for Non-Advalorem Assessments for Fire Assessments.
A resolution of the City of Palaca, Florida, electing to use the uniform method of collecting non-advalorem assessments levy then all or part of the City of Palaca, Florida, stating a need for such levy, providing for the mailing of this resolution, and providing an effective date.
So move. Motion on the floor, there's a second. Motion on the floor, there's a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Ms. Kitchens.
Elite from kitchens, 1027 South 12th Street, Palaca, Florida. I'm asking you to not put the fire service fee onto the 2016 property tax bills. As long as you send out the fire tax bills, you have control over them. Currently, Mr. Suggs has the authority to defer payments for those in financial distress, and those who can't pay the full amount at one time are now allowed to pay in five payments. Once the fire service fee goes onto the advalorem or property tax bill, it will be subject to the laws governing advalorem taxes, and the fire fee can't be separated from the bill and addressed in a different way from that bill. You will not be able to defer the fire fee or allow the citizens to pay in five payments. If the tax bill is not paid by the end of May each year, a tax certificate will be sold on the property. When that certificate is two years old, the holder of that certificate, certificate can apply for a tax deed and take title to the property. Contrary to what some of you think, people do lose their property for unpaid taxes, even if the tax bill is only for a service fee. You, the current city commission, told the citizens that while you have the authority to take their homes for non-paying- You, the current city commission, told the citizens that while you have the authority to take their homes for non-payment of the fire fee, that you would never do that. So if the city continues to send out the fire bills, the worst that will happen to the citizens unable to pay that bill is that they will have a lien on their property. The city sending the fire tax bills out protects the citizens from losing their homes. If the city puts the fire service fee onto the tax bills, the citizens of Palacca will lose their homes if they are unable to pay the tax bill with the fee on it. Please don't put the fire service fee onto the advalorem tax bills. Let the city keep on sending out the tax bills. They won't change the amount of money you're collecting from the fire service fee, but it will save the Palacca citizens' homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
I want, is that, is that true that when we add that to it, it puts it where, we cannot waiver anything, anything?
I had never heard the question raised before tonight. I think Mr. Noel had mentioned it to me ten minutes ago. So I did not have a chance to research the issue. Obviously, I'm not the expert in the field, but we could have gotten an answer. I've known about it before, five minutes ago.
If I would have to say something, I would say, if we can, is this something that we have to take a position on tonight? Because I would like to have as much information, or at least have our attorney, who advises us to make sure that we're all, he can answer any questions that may have arrived. Because honestly, some of the things that Mrs. Kitchen stated, we did say, doing a lot of discussion of the fire assessment fee, and I would like to make sure that we, again, cross all of our Ts and D's, all of our Is, on the compound, to this particular issue. So I would make a motion, if possible, to table this information until time certain.
That was on the floor already.
So, it's a resolution, correct?
Yes.
What, what, what were your, do you mind me asking a couple of questions? What, what are your time issues with regard to the resolution?
In the, in the court of statutes, in order to utilize this method, we have to adopt a resolution before the end of December. We have until March one, or the end of March, if the property appraiser and tax officer both agree to allow us to do it. But they have to agree. We don't have another meeting between now and the end of December, unless we call it a special meeting.
Will we ever call a special meeting to address this issue?
I think there may be plans to call it a special meeting.
There may be plans to call it a special meeting, right?
I'm not comfortable with doing this, because we said we didn't want to do anything that would make somebody lose their home.
It sounds like it will be the consensus of the commission here for myself and Mr. Reynolds to meet the both, the tax employee, the public president's office, of course, the tax collector, and maybe also reach back out to the attorney, Mark Lawson, to make sure that we put everything, how good it needs to be discussed prior to adoption of this resolution. I would suggest that if we, if we could, maybe look at our calendars for either December seventeenth or eighteenth for a possible special meeting to cover this item. And what we'll do is, we'll make those appointments tomorrow, and we'll get with them person next week and get the information back, all the commissioners.
So what you do not, you mean, the motion to table?
We gotta, we gotta work on the motion.
I guess it's still disgusting.
We're still in discussion right now. So there's a motion on the floor, we can continue discussion. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
Ma, ma, just one thing. We have four weeks of advertising, which stated the date and the place of the meeting, so we need to table to a time certain, is that correct? In order to keep the advertising?
If, if you are to avoid new advertisement, you would have to table tonight to a time certain. If you, if you didn't set the date to that time tonight, then you have to advertise again for the meeting.
And it would be four weeks of consecutive advertising?
This statute does take, we have to advertise four consecutive weeks in a row prior to adoption of the resolution.
Then you wouldn't be able to obviously meet that deadline or burden unless you table tonight to a time certain. So you need to make, I guess, if you're gonna table, I guess, you need to table to a time certain.
Or we could have not, and then we're sent subsequently.
So let me remove my motion. Here, we say my motion.
I will remove my second.
All right, motion moved, there are no more on the floor?
I'll make a motion that we table this item number five until the time certain, either December the seventeenth or the eighteenth.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Second.
You're moving to table until December seventeenth?
Which is Thursday, December the seventeenth.
At what time?
Five.
Five.
Five, that's the motion?
That would be the motion.
Second.
Motion, the second on the floor, is any discussion? Anything else to call a question, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, may the motion carry unanimously. Moving on to item six, an amended resolution setting forth policy regarding public notice of land use changes.
Ma? This is a resolution that basically adopts as a policy, a uniform method of notifying the public regarding land use changes, which are defined as including rezonings, variances, conditional uses, comprehensive plan amendments, annexations, and any other matter involving a change in the permissible use of land. It, it essentially came up as a result of the suit that Miss Kitchens had filed, or was filed on her behalf. It was a result of discussions to address concerns that I think the suit raised regarding our method of notifying the public about land use changes. This, this new method would require notification or advertisement by both case number as well as the matter. And it makes some things clear that, that actually, some of it, which incorporates a policy we were implementing in the past by practice, but may not have been in writing, and others may be a little bit new. But in my opinion, it's a good policy. And so I, I, I don't believe it's a concession, I think it's a, a good, I guess, fine tuning of, of our, our notification requirements, and it puts it in writing for us to all look at, and for staff to look at to eliminate uncertainty about these things, so I'm in favor of it.
Okay, Mr. Triggers, can you read the caption?
Resolution of the city of Palacca, Florida, adopting policy regarding notice to the public of hearings for consideration of land use matters.
Some move. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion on the floor, a second. Now, open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone for public here? Seeing no one here for public here, both public here. Is there any further discussion? Questions, they call, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item number seven on the agenda, authorize exclusion of program site use agreement with the First T of North Florida Inc. to designate the Palacca Golf Club as the official program site.
A resolution of the city of Palacca, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a test of program site use agreement between the First T of North Florida Inc. and the Palacca Golf Club to provide access for delivery of the First T program to participants.
Some move. There's a motion on the floor, a second. There's a motion on the floor, a second. Is there, we're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? We'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions, they call, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Duncan, you please come forward. Motion carries unanimously. We'd like to take this time to welcome First T Program Coordinator, Monty Duncan, former Gator football player. I'm in Oskawa, anyone?
Yes, I am.
Former, you can't just give us a brief overview of what First T is for those who aren't aware of what First T program is.
The First T program is a youth empowerment group. Most people think that we're a golf-related program, and we do use the golf course, and golf is a vehicle to teach kids life core values and life skills. So there will be a day when they'll learn in respect. Well, we'll teach them the proper use of how to shake someone's hands, how to look them into the eye, how to speak firmly, and ask questions that will engage them in conversation. I'm happy to be here on a night when y'all gave up students of the month, because it kind of ties into what the First T does. We want to help the community grow stronger together. And so for us, being able to come into the Palacca golf course, now that we're in the national school program in all the elementary schools, it gives us a chance to get them from the schools into the golf course, which we think will only help and benefit the school, all the, all the kids in the, all the kids in, in the community. Mr. Joe Barrow, who's the CEO of the First T, always likes to say, asks a question, are the kids well? And his response to everybody working in the First T is he wants to hear children are doing well. Because if the children are doing well, the community is strong and growing.
Also present is Jim Roach from the Public County Schools District, and we're trying to talk a little bit about the commitment that the school has made thus far to First T.
We have, actually, the First T has made a commitment to us. They have purchased all the equipment, we have the First T program in all our elementary schools now. We will see approximately, or the First T will be given or implemented to about forty-five hundred kids a year, which should make a huge difference. Our goal is to track it over a three-year period and see how it affects attendance, discipline, and academics in our schools. Also, we, it has been my pleasure to attend a couple trainings where Monty's been, and I've, I've had the opportunity to work with some kids who have been into the First T program for sometimes a year, sometimes two, three years. I cannot believe how confident these kids are. They will look you in the eye, and they'll walk up and shake your hand and say, hi, I'm Jim Roach. And they will look you in the eye, and they will expect the same kind of typical response from you. And it's, they're, they're pleasant, they're confident, they're courteous, and I was amazed.
We're, we're excited to have the kids come out. We've been wanting to have the First T come to Palacca for four or five years now, and Jim Roach stepped up and made it happen. And it's exciting for us, we have some junior programs at the course, but nothing that's gonna go and do anything like this. It's, it's good for us, it's good for the future of the golf course, and we're excited.
And just as, just as a note, I had the opportunity to go over to Melon Elementary School when the program was introduced to the school district, and to really watch about, watch two different groups of kids go through the program of respect. And respect was the work for the day, and through every phase of what these kids went through, they were taught some aspect of respect. It was more than about golf, it was about introducing our kids to the nine core values of this program, and it's exactly the kind of things that we need. And so I, definitely from our, from our position, it's, it's a pleasure to have First T become a part of public county, and a part of the city of Palacca, and we, we look forward to great things. So we thank you. Any questions?
No, I don't have a question. I would just want to say, it takes a village to raise a child, and this commission has gone forth to work with you. I noticed that the reporter has, the photographer has left from here, but I would like you gentlemen in this city commission to take a picture and have it put in the newspaper that shows what they're getting ready to do, and they have the full support of this meeting.
Thank you.
Let's take, let's take, let's take about a three-minute recess. We'll spend the jury for about three minutes. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting back to order. We also want to take this time to recognize Commissioner Carl Flag, Department of County Commissioners, and welcome him to the table. Oh, I'm sorry, also Dana Jones for the chamber. And our, and our good friend, Michael O'Neal. So we want to thank you guys for joining us tonight. We're gonna move on to item number eight on the agenda, which is the city setting the Palacca community development and sustainability priorities. Item number eight on the agenda.
A resolution of the city of Palacca, Florida, setting community development and sustainability goals and priorities for two thousand and sixteen and subsequent years, and directing the city manager to focus the city's resources to accomplish the stated goals and priorities.
Some move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing, is anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one here, we're closed public hearing. Any discussion?
Question.
I've got one item to discuss with the neighbors.
I just want to say that with this, we've gone through a series of, we've gone through a series of meetings throughout the course of the last year, really trying to identify what those priorities are, and the priorities are, our number one priority is to waste water treatment plant, big ten-years, passes life expectancy and the upgrades that we can get from that, because that's gonna be a critical issue for us. Infrastructure upgrades and expansion would be number two. Number three, is clean affordable housing to replace the blighted and inadequate housing that we have at this point. And number four is establishment of a business incubator. We think that all of these items together, and some people may say, well, why isn't there job creation? But we think that all these items together will equate to job creation, and so that's why we didn't, we didn't actually number job creation as one of the priorities, because it, it goes hand in hand with every item that we have in this, in this, in this, in our priorities list. So we want to make sure that we just continue to echo this. This is gonna be our overwhelming theme continually as we speak with different people, we've been meeting with USDA, and we've met with several different entities throughout, and so that's what I'm sure we're talking about. Questions, they call at this time, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number nine, the agenda, discussion, total lobby services.
Sure. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, this was an item that was brought forth to this mission in the fiscal year budget fifteen sixteen for the commission to, at some point in time throughout the year, to pick up the, to pick this up and direct staff to go out for a possible RFQ or an RFT, to research out firms and bring firms back in that would help us move forward with, actually with the items that you just discussed, and number eight, which was your community development and sustainable priorities. So the city manager here tonight would like for some direction from the city council, which way we would like for us to go out for that. Would you like us to go ahead and develop a scope, and work within that scope to request some RFQs or RFTs for potential lobbyists for some assistance in giving these priorities moved, moved through the, from where we are today to where we need to be.
Motion, sir.
Second.
And what, is that to develop?
To develop the priority we need and to go out for an RFT.
And also do an RFQ?
Yeah, RFT.
So we got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Yes, second.
There's a motion on the floor, a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no, we call, voice, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number ten on the agenda, commission discussion about the state of Florida audit. And we've got one speaker, Carmen Lett, as we've come up and speak on this item, she's here for item ten and eleven, so we have to, you go on item ten first. You wanna dip both together?
Excuse me?
Are you gonna dip both together?
No, I'll come back for number eleven, it's a separate issue. Is that all right?
I'm gonna give you like thirty extra times, go ahead.
Okay.
Say your name for that just a second.
Roxanne Oregan, weeks care of two oh five Nelly Street, Palacca, Florida. I have some questions about this audit, I didn't know if you were gonna hold your discussion first. They may be answered during that, but I'm gonna go ahead and ask. In last week's meeting, you stated these were a bunch of baseless allegations, and basically, we're wasting taxpayer dollars. I think we know better than that. Golf course issues, fraud in the police department with the crime stats and getting grants. And, you know, I want to say one thing, I don't want to cast any light on Mr. Reynolds. I have full faith in his abilities as a financial director for the city. I've worked with him quite a bit over the years, he's always been upstanding and... bit over the years. He's always been upstanding and honest, and if he did not have the information, he got it from me. I never had any public records problems with him, anything of that nature. This audit by the state is a operational audit. I think the past administration, well, I know. I don't think, I know. It's in black and white. There have been problems. And things were not handled in a proper or legal manner. And when I went to Tallahassee last week, one of the issues I presented was the golf course investigation. And I was here early this year about that. And you stated that you had budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars for an internal audit. So I'd like that clarified. Was it twenty-five thousand dollars for an audit of the golf course or twenty-five thousand dollars for an internal to double-check the original audit?
Twenty-five thousand dollars to do an audit of a scope project for three years preceding our administration.
Okay. So that was the original audits that you were going for?
The scope of audit that Van Zant did is the same scope of audit that we budgeted for.
So now we've got the city?
So we saved twenty-five thousand dollars.
Exactly. Yeah. So I don't understand what all the derogatory talk is publicly. We saved twenty-five thousand dollars. You're going to find out what the past administration has done and move forward from there. And I just think there's a, you know, I've been coming down here for years and there was really no resolution to any, any of the issues I brought up. None. So, you know, and I know you and I, Mayor, we had several conversations about the golf course and stuff.
I'll give you ten seconds to wrap up on this.
Okay. So I'm just glad that this is going to occur. I hope not to see any more blasting comments in the media because everybody's starting to look guilty. Why are they against it if they've got nothing to hide? And I hope this will move the city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion from the commission? I'll go first if you guys want to. So that we're all clear, city of Palaca is not opposed to the audit. We don't have any derogatory to say. Our frustration is in the fact that everyone in this state, including those who travel, those who are far from here, failed to contact us, contact us to tell us that they were going to Tallahassee, that there was going to be a meeting held.
Are they required to?
It is, we're not, I'm not. You're done with public comment. Where I am right now is, no one called us. No one gave us notice. It was publicly said that the city was notified at this meeting on Monday. That's my only frustration. Commissioner Van Zant called me on that Wednesday following the meeting, asking me what was it that I wanted him to ask for appropriations for the city of Palaca in this upcoming, in this upcoming session. And so I, my comment was, I wish you'd have called me a week prior to let me know that we needed to be in Tallahassee as opposed to calling me, asking me about funding when you just went on TV compared us to two other communities where they had arrests and some other things in place. We asked for an audit. We budgeted for an audit in September. Everyone's concerns didn't go in deaf ears. When we went through our budget process this year, we made sure the appropriate funds were in place to do an audit. And we went out and we had people sending in information from outside this community so that we could try to get that audit in place. We don't have a negative, we don't have a negative thing whatsoever to say. And say this twenty-five thousand dollars, no, what it looks like. So to us, we welcome the audit. We've put in our own level of controls. We've operated with transparency for, since we've been here. And we operate with transparency. We listen to our citizens. We vet, we overvet, we overmeet, we listen. And so that's what we do here. And that's the culture that we created. That's the culture that we're going to continue to have. And so there are concerns. We invite you to bring them forward. It may not be done in the speech that you think it should be done in, but it does not go in deaf ears. And so again, we thank you for your presence as you bring issues to us. But just understand that some things don't get taken care of overnight. And so there is no animosity, there's no, there's no anger, there's none of that. The only thing we want is if there's going to be a discussion about the city of Palaca, then have us at the table. That's the only thing that we want from anybody. That is called due process through the fifth and the fourteenth amendment of the United States of America. And so that's all we ever want and that's all we ever need. It's also common courtesy and professional, and professional courtesy. So if you can treat us like men and women and give us the opportunity to come to the table, then you'd understand that that audit was in place during the budgeting process. And the only thing that had to be said was, hey, the city's budgeted for that audit, would the auditing committee be willing to fund the audit that they'd already budgeted for? And we've done fine. That's our concern. So is there any other comments, any other comments from the commission?
May I say, that was what you just said, but I would add this. Only thing the audit can do, if we do have issues, is make us better. And that's what we intend to be as best. And if that audit's going to help us do that, then my hat's off to it.
Any other comments?
You said it.
It's well said.
So we thank everybody for that opportunity because it gives us, it gives us a chance to have a clean slate and clear mind. And so again, we're going to close this event out. Is there anything else, Mr. Suggs, related to the audit?
No, sir. I think we, I think we covered it.
We're moving on to item number eleven, which is City Manager and Administrative Reports. And we will start with item A, which is Police Chief Search.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. We have continued to be diligent in narrowing down our resumes for Chief of Police Position for the city of Palaca. We have sent out and vetted out community events resumes already and have questionnaires back. We have limited or we have reduced our applicant pool down to seventeen. From that seventeen, I continue to vet them out, do the background searches as well as the questionnaires. I'm waiting on one or two more questionnaires to come back in. Hopefully I'll get those this, this week. I know the last one is, is being mailed in. If all goes well, I'm hoping to do, projected, I should say, to do interviews next Thursday if all works out. And then now that we have a special commission meeting scheduled already for that Thursday evening, again, if all does well, we'll also add an item to the agenda to appoint a new police chief. Do want to caution us so that I am vetting them out, waiting for the, the last two questionnaires to come back before we can actually move forward with a interview list. And as soon as that comes over, we will definitely do that. We will hold interviews, the way I have it scheduled right now, if I'm looking to do interviews all in one day, it'll be about a five to six-hour day and vet them out and be ready to make a motion or an appointment towards the Chief of Police to the Commissioners at that time.
We've got one Speaker, Carl, can this please?
Yes. So do I understand correctly, the day you do the interviews, you will then ask for a motion to make the choice?
If the process lends itself to that, yes, ma'am. If we can get everything done, if I can get the, the interviews completed in time for the special city commission meeting that has already been scheduled, I will at that time bring the candidates forward after the city commissioners for their approval.
Okay. And that will, you're going to cut that down to a shortlist or going to do all seventeen that you've chosen?
No, ma'am. I am narrowing it down right now. I've got it down to six.
Okay.
And I'm waiting for the last two questionnaires that we sent out to come back in. Once I get those in, I will, I will pull from those six, those that I feel are best qualified to lead the city at the police department.
Okay. When you do that, if you have that vote, if you do that motion and do that vote, that's, you'll choose from that six. You'll make the recommendation for this board to approve, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That'll be like a one-day process?
The interview will be a one-day process.
Correct.
The process has been three months.
No, I, oh, it's been quite a while, believe me. I've been trying to get a new police chief for quite a while. The, I'm understanding that the, all the interviews, the six interviews, you're going to cut it down to, those will be done in one day, and then you will make your decision from that. And then when will the board vote on it?
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Absolutely.
That's if everything goes well.
That is correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That is correct. We're talking about process here.
Right.
If all goes well with the process of those six, so I've got it narrowed down to, I will choose those that are the most appropriate to interview.
Correct.
Okay?
Yeah.
Anywhere between one to six.
Right.
Just what we understand. And once the interviews are completed and we're satisfied with the quality of applicants that we have and the interviews went well and we feel comfortable with those selections or to be able to make a selection out of those, then I will bring a name, a surname to the city commission for review and appointment.
Okay.
That will be the process.
That's, that's what I'm asking the timeframe on. From the time you make either one to six, you know, the interviews, you choose your, your name to bring to the commission. What is the timeframe on that? To have it on, it'll be done at a regular board meeting, correct?
Once again, if we get it completed and the process goes smooth, then we can get it completed by next Thursday, the seventeenth of December. There's already a commission meeting scheduled. I will bring it forth at that time. If not, it will be at a later meeting, most likely in January.
Gotcha. I understand that. So it's wham-bam. Okay. If it goes, okay.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
She did it last time.
I did it last time.
Mr. Mayor, may I continue with the city manager reports?
Let me see if we got a discussion from the commission on this. Any discussion?
I'm in process. I just want to make sure that the city manager has adequate time to make sure who does this, who do this, as well. And we're not rushing him. And make sure that he has his schedule and his plan. He has a plan in place. Let's just make sure we give him opportunity to operate the plan.
Commissioner, well, I thank you for that.
Any other comments?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, next item is Mr. Crowe. Mr. Crowe, are you here? We've been approached about a school housing sign at one of our newest schools. And I've asked Mr. Crowe to research it. Mr. Roach, is he still here? If not, he, he actually was involved with us as well. Mr. Crowe, could you give us an update, please, as to what, what it is and we need to do?
Yes, sir. Dad, growth planning director. The school in question is the Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, I believe, recently opened this school year at the corner of Palm Avenue and Kennedy. Was concerned about kids crossing the street. Mr. Roach and I have been discussing it. We brought the sheriff's department into it and the county public works into it. It's a little bit of a complex situation, but essentially this is a county road, so it's under the county's purview. Mr. Roach, when we last discussed this today, was working with the county to install some school zone signs in that area as a first step to see what that would do to, to at least inform motorists that they need to be careful and slow down because of the kids in that area. And I, we think that that probably is a good step at this point in time. If it doesn't seem to have an impact or if there's more that needs to be done, we will help him however we can, working with the sheriff's department for a crossing guard or flashing lights or whatever else may be needed. That's where we are right now.
Commissioners, this is another one of those examples that we talked about early on, about taking ownership. The, the school and a couple other folks reached out to the city, the community, the schools located within the city, even though it's really not in our jurisdiction. It's the sheriff's office in Spalista County, sees how it's working. We didn't drop the ball on, nor did we leave them out there. I had Mr. Crowe do the research and work with each one of the entities because it is within our jurisdiction. We don't want anything to happen to the citizens within the city of Pointe. And so this is just another one of those examples of an opportunity to take in ownership and seeing the process through to hopefully make a safe environment for all the, all the folks that are within that school. Appreciate the fact.
We've done the same thing in the past and were diligently with the county. Commissioner Flag and I have taken rides out to look at the charter school, same, similar, similar situation, just to make sure that we can provide the kids with safe routes only. So Mr. Griffin, we were tired of this as well. And so we've been trying to address those issues as much as we can. You have anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Chief Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Project update, would you like?
Yes, sir.
Just a few of the projects that we have had some recent movement on. As you're all probably aware, FDOT has been doing the temporary fix on Ninth Street to try and alleviate some of that stormwater flooding. We have also had some productive meetings with their engineering consultant and their staff in regards to the 2019 project where they will make the improvements from Reed Street to Osceola Street. We've had productive meetings with the Water Management District and the Department of Economic Opportunity in regards to your Community Development Block Grant project that will occur next summer. And we have three projects that we need to bring to your attention tonight. We need some direction on. Two of them are contract negotiations for two residential properties that the city owns. And we issued an RFP approximately a year and a half ago. And we're at a point in the negotiations where we need some direction from the commission. Mr. Holmes, Mr. Suggs, would you like me to go over it or would you like to get into the details?
Go ahead, Jonathan.
Simply put, in negotiations with Mr. Harwell and Eco Covering Group, we have come to the point where we believe we need to have a security, be it a letter of credit or cash collateral or something to that effect. Mr. Harwell has proposed some alternatives. I believe that was included in your packet that was handed out. And you can see those alternatives. Some of those are somewhat desirable. Some of those are not desirable in staff's opinion. And we just need to know if you'd like us to bring this back before you with a denial of those terms or to negotiate final terms on the contract for your approval.
If I could, Jonathan, for the commission's sake, these are things that have been in place for quite some time now. What it is is we're now being, again, just to keep our commissioners informed of where we're at and what we're doing. This was a request that came from Mr. Harwell to possibly renegotiate, I guess is a good term, the request for the collateral that was needed to move forward on this. One of the suggested languages, I believe, Frank Nester or Rick Rippon among is, is the placement of another piece of property as collateral.
Yes.
It's, I'll be honest with you, it's staff's recommendation that we don't look, we do not enter into that type of agreement where we're looking at placing another piece of property as a collateral. The language in the, in the agreement was quite clear and simply stated that there were some requirements that was needed. It will be staff's recommendation that we pretty much just kind of say status quo, I believe, with the, with the agreement that's stated unless there's any other information you want to provide, Mr. Griffin.
If you recall, these were properties that were not in due repair at all. The city's desire was to place them back in due repair and have them on the tax rolls. I think there were three pieces in total originally brought before the commission, is that correct? And basically agreed to give them away, conditioned upon people bringing them up into, to a good condition, which is not a, we're not talking about molly and grab, we're talking about some fairly substantial renovations. The concern, so in concept, that's what you agreed to do. And you agreed to do it to the, to these recipients. But the details are always where things get a little bit complicated. What we were concerned about was that we deed it them to someone. And then in the process of trying to renovate them, they incurred charges for labor and material or whatever, and you ended up with mechanic's lanes on the property. And then they didn't get completed. And the city tried to take them back because the reverberating faucets were going to be in the, in the deal. We take them back with a bunch of names on them, which will not make anybody happy. So we were trying to provide some safeguards so that while they were getting it for free, they would guarantee us that while they were renovating them, they would have the incurred lanes. And that's where, that's why the issue of the collateral came up. Because I think originally we asked for a letter of credit or a bond or something, and then that turned into something else and something else. So basically, we just need to know, it isn't for us to decide how much risk you assume. We can advise you of the risks, but you're the policymakers and we need direction as to how much risk you're willing to assume in that process. And then we could, you know, we can make it happen. So if you say deed it to them and we just take the risk that bad things happen, that's the way it'll go. On the other hand, you say that you're willing to do it, but you're willing to do it with a phased approach to, to the collateral. Whatever your, your desires are, that's, that's what we're trying to implement. We're trying to give you the information.
We had somebody who's come forward to, that wants the process, yes?
Just Harwell at this point.
You've had, you had multiple responses on Two-Fifteen Dodge and Three Hundred South Ninth. Anthony Harwell was selected as the top respondent on Two-Fifteen Dodge and Eco Covering Group was selected as the top respondent on Three Hundred South Ninth. And the third property, Eco Covering Group, was the sole respondent.
Commissioner Norwood?
I'm still trying to digest. I have, yeah, this is my first time hearing, my first time seeing, even though it was here on the desk when I got here tonight, I didn't know it was a part of, it's going to be out, part of the discussion tonight.
Can we, I would suggest that we bring this back on for our January, our first January meeting, have an opportunity to further rent this process and kind of.
Can we add to that discussion? You know, the city, I think Tampa and St. K at one time decided they needed to do some stuff to help with the police department, and they did features at that time. But why I've been asking was if any way we could have properties like this that we could look at our employers, that the people that work for us that would like to get into homes, being able to look at that. Can we put that into that discussion the next time? It may not be these three properties, but something else, because if they have an incentive that comes from the city, it helps them and it helps us with how we take care of our people. What Tampa and St. K did, and who can't afford to do that, they did the down payment and closing costs, I think, or the down payment for those employees, and they got to get going on a home. And at some point in time, we do need to take care of the folks that kind of take care of us, because we have not been able to give our employees raises for quite a while. They went five years one time, and I think they got one and a half percent last year and nothing this year. So that may help us if we can legally do it to do something for our employees. So could we add that into the discussion when we talk about it?
I don't have a problem adding it to it and just make sure that we bid with our attorney and knowledge, just to make sure that it's.
He did it now. I'm sure he did it now.
I would only comment on doing that in this particular portion of it because we're talking about the contractors on the table. I think it's something.
I'm not saying these right here, Mayor, I'm saying.
And we are, I mean, we've had those discussions before about live where you work incentives that are out there, and there are some existing incentives with that under the same concept of that right now. So we will definitely take into consideration if we start continuing with all the housing options that are out there. Is there a motion? We need, well, we don't, we don't have a motion table, this is not actually, anything else?
Yes, the other project that we need some direction on, and it may be that you just want to schedule it for your January meeting or a special meeting, is the golf course restaurateur RFP and how that's going to relate to the requests for proposals or invitation to negotiate or whatever you term it for the golf course management or any other option thereof, whatever you decide to do with the golf course.
Can we add that to the meeting? Whatever we're okay with adding that to the meeting for seventeen? I think time is the best as it relates to that. I got a letter from the USDA as well. We had communication with them earlier this week.
That is all unless you have specific questions in relation to any specific project.
Just the hotel and the riverfront LLC.
The hotel, they were supposed to start the sewer lateral installation on the ninth. They started a little bit behind schedule today. I'm going to check in on the progress tomorrow to see how it's coming. They've been leveling some of the floors. I believe they have a good stucco contractor lined up, so you'll begin to see the finish of the exterior come together. And hopefully, we'll see construction on site work starting January. I'm still being told they're going to be ready for the Bassmaster Elite, but we're tracking that as closely as we can. In regards to the 100 block, have not had any direct communication with Mr. Diamond in the past few weeks. We've played phone tag, so I really don't have any updates, sir.
Do you want to give a quick update of our visit to look at the riverboat?
Yes, we visited the boat, I think, a little under a month ago. Boat number two is substantially complete, and we're working through the vessel registration process with a marine consultant to get the Coast Guard registration number. Once that is complete, we can then schedule the final inspection and delivery of boat number two with the marine architect and the Coast Guard rep out of Jacksonville.
Any other questions? Thank you. Chief Lester?
Yeah.
Lambert, I'm sorry. You can do that. Mr. Crowe?
No.
Commissioner Norwood?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd just like to make sure that, you know, that we say Merry Christmas to everybody. And, but I know we're going to probably have a special meeting called on the eighteenth, and I really do appreciate seeing all the lighting and all downtown, wearing the happy lit up, it's really nice. So I was glad to see the individual get recognized for the work that they did concerning that as well. And also, the fountain, you know, we've been talking about those now for two years, and I was glad to see the community actually coming together and actually repair those and restore them, and that really looks good as well. And just want to encourage our community to continue to look for those opportunities where we can collaborate and get that job well done.
I would, Mr. Mr. Strish, anything?
I'd remind you guys about tomorrow, golf course, city.
Mr. Holmes?
Yeah.
Drew?
Officer.
Commissioner Moore?
Just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year for the season, same thanks for commission. We're going to see y'all on December seventeenth. Again, I'd like to echo Commissioner Norwood stating about lighting up downtown Palaca with the Christmas light. Brings joy to me, as well as the fountain downtown has been down for such a long time, saved us quite a bit of money as it relates to the original cost that was going, was laid out there. So we did it for zero dollars to the city. So again, we'd like to thank everybody who took part in that. We so appreciate that, so.
Commissioner Campbell?
Oh, yes. I really want to go back and kind of echo and appreciate you for your words when it came down to the audit, but I really want us to, Putnam County and Palaca really have a black or gray cloud that's really hanging over us at this time. With the suspicion of fraud, the timeframe of the scheduling for this, for this audit, the city is at a loss of possible funding that may come as a result. And it's not, I guess with the audit committee, they're going to go forward with the audits that they already have in place and then determine when they are going to come and if they're going to come, schedule the audit for the city and the county. And I guess what are we, as far as with funding and all of the other stuff, how are we going to address that as the commission office, you know, city manager or attorney? If you can kind of, with all the, with the suspicion of the fraud, again, I'm for it, I'm not against it, we talked about it previously before, but with the suspicion of the fraud between the city, I mean, within the city and the county, the, we're at a loss, well, we're, you know, we're at a risk for funding, you know, state funding.
My suggestion is that we continue on, that's important, and that when our audit takes place, and the audit will reveal whatever it reveals at that point, and we move forward. We've been transparent already, and at that point, we'll continue. I don't think it really calls for much response.
Well, I guess with the timing, where can we, is there not a way as far as the civil dress, the timing of this audit?
I think we just continue on. I think we continue on doing what we do in meetings with our legislators, being with our legislative people, going out, meeting our delegates, and just continue moving Palaca and Palacan as well as.
Just one more thing.
And I think the expectation is that our staff treat this audit as if we treat any of our property, whatever they need, to make sure they get it, and that we have an opportunity to contact them and send them information ahead of time. I think we ought to take that opportunity to do it as well. And it's like the mayor said earlier, you know, transparency is what we all about, and just make sure that the audit runs as smoothly as possible again, as possible again from our end.
And I think we've shown, we've created a pattern of listening, of addressing, and being transparent, and moving forward.
And just one more thing, just kind of aside this, was that everyone was done with that portion?
Well, I just want to, if I could, Commissioner Campbell, just too much, that the information that came out of county, I have to, was it could be scope as low as a timeline in the hands of the audit and dinner and office, but we really don't know when that's going to take place. But I can assure you that as soon as we get the scope of what it is that we're looking for, Mr. Reynolds, myself, and city staff will be very diligent, giving all information to them in a timely manner, because we want this to happen as quickly as possible, because we don't want that cloud hanging over the city of Palaca or blood of Putnam County no longer needs to be, so we don't have to be concerned about future funding.
And I think we have to remember, another thing too, is these allegations. And, you know, I don't think an allegation doesn't look good for the community, but then to put a cloud over right here is where it just gives us an opportunity to prove that we've been doing what we should be doing as a city as a whole.
But also too, I think it answers any citizen's questions and concerns as well. So you want to come out of this thing zero balance and, you know, just be thankful that people are concerned and bringing things forward, I mean, for us to, if they have any concern, look into it and just keep it moving.
Exactly. Do you think I have something?
Just one more thing. Most of the elementary are in the process of putting together a career day. This is the first ever career day that the school will be hosting. So we're looking for individuals with different career paths that will be willing to come out and talk to our students. It's next year, February, but we're trying to go ahead and kind of get a grab on who we can get from the community to come in. If you are interested in doing so, please give me a call, give Mosley a call, and we greatly appreciate anyone that will come out and spend about twenty to thirty minutes speaking to our young individuals here in the city of Palaca.
Officer.
As we go forward and get buildings and other things going, I would like to ask us to consider putting there a walk with him or something. When he lived, when we worked to get Price Martin going, he would not let us put his name on anything. He said that people should be there before they get stuff named after them, because if they messed up, you couldn't take the name back. And that was his philosophy. At one time, we wanted to do that building, he served this community for almost twenty years. And I think that we need to let our young people know that we have people who came from this community, who are part of this community, to make it what it is. The other thing I'd like to say is that good stuff is happening in us too. We were featured in the Quality Magazine with the Garden League of Cities for our water treatment plant. It's a two-page spread. If some of you all haven't seen it, take a look at it. We're trying to make sure that we get something in there as many times as we can, every edition that they send out, so that people know that we are doing a good job. If there are things that you all want on there, please let me know, and we'll see if we can put it together to get, to get that done.
Thanks, man, we've got a good story that we can actually tell. You know, when I came on the commission back in 2000, one of the things that we were still doing, we were still discharging to the St. John's River. And, you know, we've taken, I guess, most of our ways were out of the St. John's River. I think maybe we've probably taken ninety percent of that.
Fourteen.
And I won't say totally out, but sometimes we have big rings and that kind of thing, we still may have to send certain.
We did it this start this year with the storm.
The other thing is, we can be put up for awards for some of that stuff we've done. They feature a three or four activities in cities, so you just need to know when it comes out. And if, Commissioner Norwood, if you know somebody, we can write the article up really well for us and pass it, and pass it along, I would try to get it into that book. I got one more thing to say, I know y'all wondering, but a minute that I have. I would really, I really have, since I'm the senior member, I really have enjoyed working with you guys this year. I think that we have come to a point in time where we don't only talk, we listen, but we have spent countless hours and long, long meetings trying just to find out what our citizens want and try to work towards it. Sometimes our job is taken lightly, but for the love of this town, I think most of us are here. And I'd like to thank our staff and the people who work for us, because they have backed us up wherever we want it to go and whatever we want to do. And I hope that you all have a wonderful Christmas. I brag about how smart you all are, and hope y'all are contented to do that and not let me down, because if you do them a day, it's, you have a nice holiday. And I'd like to say that too about our manager. We didn't put him on the hot seat. He's been here since around July, and he hasn't done anything but help us run the race that we're trying to run for this town.
Thank you. You have anything?
I guess you want to figure it out?
Oh, only, yeah, and I just think it's a good story that we can actually tell. And I think one of the things that we can actually do is pull together all the timelines that we started taking in and out of, and the things that we actually have done with reuse, water reuse, and those type things, in order to get our effort going out of the St. John's. I think that's just a good, good story that we could actually tell. And not only that, would also help us as well, and we talk about grants as well, talk about, you know, we got to also talk about all those good things that you're doing in order to get you grants and what you're doing with grant money, and once you get it as well. So I think when we ask, if the staff would just go back and just look at the timelines and the things that we've done incrementally to get us to this point, I think that it's going to be a really good story.
Thank you, sir. And I'll close up. Want to remind you guys, the city hall's closing at one o'clock tomorrow, so we're going to close up tomorrow a little early as a reward for our, to our staff for the job that they've done this year. We want to wish everybody a happy holiday. We're going to see you again in about a week. But I also have a question. I see some young guys taking notes on this front row, and all you guys are dressed alike. I'm trying to figure out what's going on. You got, you all have a 235 on the side of your arm, so is somebody going to sit stand up and tell me who you guys are? Can y'all stand up for me right quick? First of all, you guys look great, and we thank you for being here and being so attentive and being so better. You guys are.
Sitting on the front row.
And you're sitting on the front row.
Absolutely.
We want each one of you guys to come up, give us your name, would you give us your name and then tell us where you're from?
Okay, my name is Trey Sanders, and I'm from here in Palaca.
Sure, great.
Say that again.
Make your name and where you're from.
I am a first class right now. I.
I'm a star scout rank.
Very good.
My name's James Hinden, I'm from Satsum, I'm a tinderfoot rake.
Move into Palaca.
My name is Landon Carlisle, I'm from here in Palaca, and I am a scout rank.
My name is Wyatt Parker, I am a tinderfoot rake, and I'm from Palaca.
My name is Logan Cipral, I'm a first class rake. I'm a patrol leader, and I'm from Satsum, Florida.
Hi, my name is Derek, I am from downtown Palaca, and I am second class.
I'm Corey Gedrus, I'm troop 235's committee chair. These gentlemen are from a troop in east Palaca, and they're working on their communication mar- These gentlemen are from a troop in East Palacka, and they're working on their communication merit badge. And they were required to attend a public meeting, and now they have to go home and write their scout master a report. So thank you for your patience with them this evening, I'm very proud of them. Thank you.
That concludes my report, guys. We thank you for being here, we thank you for your patience, and we thank you for the work that you're doing. And we look forward to seeing great things come from you. We're now at Derek.